We're just missing one. It's six o'clock and to call the meeting to order. Director Beisel, can you please take attendance for us?
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Jessica Dressley. Not here. Becky Beisel here. Carrie Tate? Here. Stephanie Mom?
Here.
Brian Davis.
Here. If you don't mind, please standing, removing your hats for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Some of.
Do a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved as set. Next on our list is approval of the minutes from the July 27, 2022 regular board meeting. Need a motion for that, please?
Some of.
Second? Anybody with a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the minutes from July 27, 2022 regular board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? We're all set there. I'd like to recognize all the visitors we have, both on HGTV and in person. Thank you for being here and being part of our meeting tonight. We will now move on to announcements and recognition.
All right, I'm excited to bring up our Hastings trap team. If our team could come up and coaches as well, just to the the front table here, that'd be fantastic. School board, I wanted to recognize our our trap team. They made it to six of them, seven of them made it to Nationals. And so I thought there was not much better way to kick off the almost start of the school year than to have a recognition of some folks who worked hard and should be celebrated for the their accomplishment over the summer. So with that, we have several coaches here. My understanding is the head coach Robinson, right? So unique story there. He comes from where, gentlemen?
South Dakota.
South Dakota. So their head coach drives from South Dakota to coach our team. So yeah, I wonder if we can give him a round of applause just for doing that. So with that, I would ask that you introduce yourself, let the board know who you are. And then they may have some questions or comments for you as well. And we can maybe start right from from my left, your right. And the microphone's on. If you just want to point it up towards you, it'll pick you up.
Dan Riveness, and I'm a coach.
I'm Carter Bauer, and I'm a shooter.
My name's Cody Frandrup, and I'm also a shooter.
My name's Tanner Lamb. I'm a junior captain.
My name's Brennan Kiefer, and I'm a shooter.
I'm Luke Nadeau, and I'm a shooter.
I'm Connor Barr, and I'm a shooter.
Hello, I am Dawn Walker. I'm the team manager.
I'm Gene Grabner, one of the coaches.
My name is Alden Balson, and I'm also a coach.
So with that, school board, I present you our group that attended Nationals. I don't know if you have any questions or comments for them, and we'll go from there.
Director Mom, you seem to be chomping at the bit.
Sorry. When I was walking in, I saw Luke, you have patches on the back of your jersey. Would somebody explain what those are?
So when you shoot trap, there's 50 shots in like around, and you shoot 25, and you shoot 25, and that's your 50. Then you come back. It could be two o'clock in the afternoon, it could be five o'clock, and you shoot your other 50, and that's a total of 100 shots. Out of those 100 shots, you get placed with all, I don't even know, how many kids were at Nationals for? 1,700 kids. There's individual and teams, and every 25 you shoot, that's 25 straight. And then you get a patch for it. So you can shoot, I think, last or Nationals, there was a kid walking around with 350 straight. That's 350 rounds straight consecutively on a miss. That's that's your patches.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I don't know if you can show the board members. Like, that is a huge accomplishment and something to be very proud of.
Those aren't the most patches, though.
So how many are on the team in total?
There's about 100 kids on the team.
So it's the largest team we have in this center?
I'm not sure if we still are, but the four years before COVID, we had the largest team in the nation.
Wow.
We had between 130 and 135 kids.
That's outstanding. Congratulations. That's awesome.
So does anyone else want to talk about Nationals or just what it's like or how it works or best moments, something like that? Where it was, all of that?
Okay, I'll go. Okay. So Nationals was up in by Mason, Michigan. And we normally, my first year in trap, it was a year before COVID, we had 10 kids went. And how many went this year? Six kids went this year, and it was it. My first year on trap, it's not something you never forget when you go out there, just seeing all the kids, all the shooters out there. It's just something that changes your world. Because it just, you know, it shocked shocked me even when I found out the Hastings had a trap team. It shocked me that there was a school sport with firearms in it. And then I grew up hunting and all that, and I gave it a shot. And it's something that will, if you don't like other sports, trap is like something that really liked me. Because I played football, a lot of the different sports, and they did not interested me as much as trapped has. So that's my view on it.
Director Adine.
I think at least one of you graduated this year. Because I think I got to shake your, oh, okay, more than one of you graduated. For those of you who are who graduated in, I guess that would have been spring of 22, can you tell us what's what's next for you guys? I'd be curious to hear for the three of you. Thank you.
Um, I am more likely going to be coming back and coaching on the trap team. It's something that I want to do the rest of my life. It's I get a lot of entertainment out of it. So. Any other questions? All right.
That's that's right in Athletic Director Trent Hanson's like measurement goal, which is retention. I mean, if you retain a participant into coaching, I think that's just such a strong statement about the.
I wish. I'd like to join Cody and be a coach with him.
I'll definitely be coming back to coach. It was when I started in eighth grade, it's probably the most funnest time I had in high school was shooting trap. And so I'll be coaching.
Anybody else have any questions for you, gentlemen? All right. Well, thanks again, guys, and congratulations. Thanks for coming out tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we'd like to invite you to come and watch the team. Shoot on Sundays from 10 to 2:30. Nope, from May through June. Start in March, probably don't want to come out then because it's pretty confusing. Come in May.
I'll tell you right now, it's gonna be confusing for me anyway.
So we shoot at 3:00 in facilities. From 10:30 or 10 o'clock till 2:30 on Sundays, from 2:30 to 6 on Monday afternoons. Please come out and watch. These kids are amazing. Safety is top notch. Mark was Marcus Williams ship is superb, and they're all going. So please come and watch.
We just wanted to add something that we could just, we don't know if everyone here realizes what they did at Nationals as a team. So as a team, it was 200 and you said 80?
Yes, teams.
Okay. So they placed seventh out of all those teams, which was awesome. And then for the individuals, Brennan Kiefer, our senior, he placed 145th place. Brock Mosher, who's not here, 183rd place. Luke Nadeau, 424th place. Cody Frandrup was 514th place. Tanner Lamb, 761st. Carter Bauer was 1,350, and this is out of the 1,700 kids. And then for straights, what they're talking when they shoot these straights, there's a lot of kids on the team that are never going to shoot a straight in their life. Yeah. So Brock shot four straight 25s, two 50s. Brennan shot three straight 25s, three straight 50s. Cody Frandrup shot two 25s and a 50. And Luke Nadeau, he got two 25s and Tanner Lamb one. And just the other thing I want to say, when you mentioned about the coaches, that makes our team so awesome. We have like 20 coaches, not one has a kid on the team. We've all been there. My daughter shot for five years. She's been off five. It's like a 12, we're at 12 years. And that's why Earl is still driving back from South Dakota because we love it. It's awesome. And we do have a skeet team. I don't want, I want you to know, we do have a skeet team too. They just don't go to Nationals, but they're great too. So thank you so much.
That is a fantastic way to go for a meeting. Thanks again. That's awesome. We need to move to the listening session summary, please.
We just had, we'll call them concerns about policy 215, answering emails, and then just following up with some requests that have been done through appeal emails. And just looking more and how that could those could be followed followed through. That's what I took out of that process tonight.
Okay, Director Adine.
Yeah, I think that that was accurate. It was the it was the timeliness and clarity of responses specific to 215 and the events of last fall. And specifically to reconsideration of textbook materials and some recent emails regarding that process, and that's in policy 606.2, and the timeliness and completeness of the responses.
All right, thank you. Ready for the superintendent's report.
All right, I have a few items for tonight. Friday, this coming Friday, is the last day of our Summer Spark and Camp Horizons program. Those for those of you who have been in the middle school, you've seen these students all over the place because the middle school's been kind of our go to with all the construction going on. But those two programs end on Friday. And then with the exception of really custodians and paraprofessionals, we are almost completely staffed. We've got a few positions here and there, but custodians and paraprofessionals still seem to be the positions that were like other districts, really struggling to to keep fully staffed. With that, right now, we have 43 new hires to the district. 22 of those are teachers. And speaking of new teachers, they begin with us tomorrow. New teacher workshop is tomorrow and Friday. And then all of our teachers return next Monday. And that's the same day that we'll hold our first all in person welcome back, the kickoff that we've done in two years. Last night, Director Larson and secondary principals held a we're listening session for high school and middle school parents. That's part of the program review that we've got going on. And tomorrow night, they hold another session. That session will run from 5 to 6 p.m. and takes place again at the high school. Today, we held our second annual summer staff brought grill out at the middle school. So this is something that we do and invite our staff that work throughout the summer, anyone that's interested. So that's always a good thing to to see everybody and and get together. And then finally, I want to give a huge shout out to our custodians and our maintenance staff who are really doing a great job working around all the schedules this summer of construction and all of our summer school programming. And our buildings look really great, and they're really short staffed. And so I just want to make sure that anytime anybody has an opportunity to give a shout out to one of the custodians, it would be much appreciated. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. I'm sorry. It's you've got to sit somewhere else. I am so sorry, Director Tate.
I was just curious about the we're listening session. So those are they're open to any parents and students of of middle school, high school, and they're specifically focused on all the different programs, classes, everything. Or is there sports stuff included in that, or is it just curriculum classroom stuff?
It's really focused on curriculum classroom stuff, not the activities or athletics. Yep. So but yes, it's open to all families of middle school and high school.
Director Adine. Okay, all right. All right, sorry about that. Okay, let's get a report on the building construction fund project, please.
So the updates from last month are the new projects that were approved by the board. Those are now listed on the report. So there were additional funds that went into the entrance security improvements project, a new project for monument signs, additional funds that went into technology improvements, and then a new project for grounds and sites improvements. Other than that, there's no other updates, but there is a lot of construction going on right now. So there'll be updates coming soon.
Questions for Ms. Superb? All right, thank you, Jen. I appreciate that. Okay, next on our list is discipline policy update.
Yeah, so we'll, thank you, Becky. It's coming. All right, so we've been talking about this at a couple of different board meetings, when we would have an update to our behavior and discipline. And so I've put a little slide deck together, and we have some data that we can share. If I can get it to maybe I have it. There we go. All right, so to begin with, and because it'd be the first time maybe a lot of people have seen this. I wanted to put together a timeline with regard to behavior and discipline. And it really goes back to the 1819 school year where there was a big behavior committee that was formed due to some concerns coming out of classrooms and buildings at the time. And so what that led us into in the really after COVID was and during COVID was the discipline policy review. There was a decision made by the policy committee at the time and the board at a time to do and have a discipline policy be the focus. Board members, we've talked about this with our three year plan, that that was in that year. And so we took and created a discipline policy review committee that included staff and parents. And we met for the greater part of that year and then ended up being able to in 2122 updating the the discipline policy. And the new discipline policy was adopted. Along with that, we drafted what we are calling our continuum of responses, and we piloted that last year. So this is a document that principals work off of to try and allow us to respond to incident like incidents from the same starting point so that we had a place where principals could be could feel comfortable with that. And then, of course, we also had the strategic plan that was adopted. And the operational focus areas with that strategic plan with mental health, MTSS, that's multi-tiered systems of support and student engagement. And all those things relate to student discipline on the proactive side. So that's why those are in there. In addition, we've trained on special education law and special education students as it relates to discipline and how to respond to them as well as being or having our administrators trained on investigations, making sure we're we're doing that correctly and thoroughly as when we have larger ticket items that come up. So this past summer, we worked through our continuum of responses and we updated that. And we just went through that with our behavior committee, which leads me into the next bulleted item, which is we had a behavior and discipline group that met at the beginning of the summer. We spent for the majority of the day together, really working through what's our discipline data? Where do we have it? Where are there holes in the collection of the data? What does our data mean? And then we had actually just met this week on Monday again with that team. And so where we are right now really is we've learned that we really need to focus this year on how we track our data and how aligned we are in the tracking of that data to make sure that from building to building, what gets entered, for example, into Infinite Campus on the behavior module is done in a similar way, building to building. And we're we're calling things the same thing as we track them. We're documenting them the same way. That was one of the discrepancies that we found. And then additionally, just aligning our data so that at the end of the year, we have clean data to look at. Because if again, if we don't have good data on the front end, then whatever we bring as a result is only as good as what we put in to begin with. And so that's been a big focus of the principals and the focus of our last Monday meeting. I was really getting at, how are we going to do that? And then, as you're all aware, with Esra Dollars, we've added additional positions this next year. We've got our MTSS positions. We've got our student support positions. We've got additional TAP positions, those therapeutic positions with Canvas Health. And then we're really focusing on restorative practices this year. So we've got a team from every building that's going to be attending restorative practices training in September so that we can really start aligning more on the front end. That's the other big piece that goes with discipline. And we've done a lot of discussion to this point with staff. Because what ends up happening with discipline is when it feels like or the perception is that things aren't going well with regard to behavior in classrooms, the first response is to go after the discipline policy. But the reality is that the discipline policy doesn't fix behaviors in the classroom. The discipline policy helps us understand how we are going to respond to discipline things that happen. And particularly, how are we going to respond within the confines of legal guidance when we have really big ticket items that happen? So we really need to focus on the front end of this. And that's what our that's what our our plan is moving forward. But I wanted to share some data as we talk about perception and we talk about what it feels like. So the last full school year of data would be the 1819 school year, and this would be for the high school. And you'll see there that in 1819, we had 1,632 referrals. However, 100 or 1,113 of those were due to attendance, parking and or work refusal. So if we take attendance, parking and work refusal out of there, so parking is stuff like, I didn't bring my parking permit. I drove a different car. We really don't wouldn't want to categorize categorize those as the same type of disruption in a classroom type discipline. So if you pull those out of the 1,632, we're left with 519 discipline events that are that were put in there. Those were made up from 269 students. And of those 269 students, 48 of them had three or more referrals. And they had 107 out of school suspensions in 1819. Now, if we compare that with last year, we're down 200 referrals. We still had almost 1,100 that were due to attendance and all that stuff. That leaves us with under 400 discipline events, 190 students, still 32 students with three or more, and the same out of school suspensions. So when we look at the data, we really have to start squaring that with how we feel and what we perceive is happening. And as the team, and we'll get to this in a little bit, but as the teams walk through that, we we had pockets of places, for example, at the high school, we had parts of the year where bathrooms were really a problem for us. You remember the TikTok challenge and all that? During that time, that felt really, really like things were not going well. But it was a bathroom incident, kids out of the hall incident, things like that. So that's what we have to focus on. Preventatively, how do we do that? Part of it, we respond by adding hallway monitors, which we did. Back to the restorative practices, the preventative, it's not about the policies, it's about what do we know to be true? And how do we respond to that proactively to get in front of it? So the middle school, we looked at this middle school the same way, 1819. You'll see the difference between 1819, 2021 is more significant than at the high school in terms of last year, we had less than 1,000 referrals. The difference in the number of students was about 100. We went from 150 students to under 100 students with three incidents. But our out of school suspensions increased at the middle school last year by quite a bit. And so that's something we need to look at. You have to, so when we get with a behavior team, we have to start asking the questions, why? How do we end up with less kids that have three or plus three plus incidents? Because typically, those are the kids that are getting suspended, right? Kids, unless it's a specific thing, a student doesn't get suspended on the first time. So it's it's a lot of the 96 kids. So what's going on with those kids that they're being suspended at a at a larger rate? And who are the kids? Then we look at the elementary schools, and we we lumped the elementary schools together. One of our learnings as we pulled all the teams together was that element, well, first of all, elementary discipline obviously works a lot different than secondary discipline. It's tracked differently. We have things like minor incidents, and kids don't just get sent down to the office in the same manner as the secondary building. So we needed to find a way that we could consistently compare the two years. And at the elementary schools to this point, our elementary schools keep a lot of their information in a Google spreadsheet or in an Excel spreadsheet, and that's how they track for their discipline committees. So what we're working on with the elementary schools is how do we create a system where we're actually putting all of that into Infinite Campus so that we can pull the same type of reports that we do at the secondary buildings? Because this took a lot more work to get the elementary data than we could from the from the secondary buildings. But you'll see the same trend. We had quite a few less referred incidents or referred kids in terms of major incidents. We had quite a few less kids with three plus incidents across the three elementary schools. And I think what's really significant is you look at in 1819, 38 out of school suspensions. Eight students made up 35 of those 38 out of school suspensions. So across the three buildings, we had eight students in the district that had the significant behaviors. Now, depending, here's how we talked about this with the elementary teachers, because elementary teachers have the same kids all day long. If you're the teacher that has that student in your classroom, you are having a much different experience than a teacher who doesn't have that student in their classroom. Likewise, the students who are in that classroom have a much different experience than their friends in a different classroom. And so we need to figure out how do we work through that, right? How are we being intentional about where we're placing kids and a more focus on that? You'll see that that number though decreased in half for this last year. We had four students, but at the same time, those four students made up 11 of the 18 suspensions that took place at the elementary. suspensions that took place at the elementary level. So in the grand scheme of things, we have really well-behaved kids. We have students who struggle with school. We have students that struggle with behavior for a variety of reasons. The work is on the front end, preparing the teachers and helping those students and ensuring that they have the supports in place so that we continue to reduce the suspensions, we continue to reduce the incidents, we get in front of it. Hallway monitors, the, the building support staff that we've put in place, the focus on special education and making sure that all of our gen ed teachers, our general education teachers, understand what accommodations are supposed to be put in place for our students. All, every little piece has to be aligned or stuff starts to feel like it's coming apart. And one of the things that we talked about with the group or the group talked about was when we think back to last year, we didn't spend a lot of time last year because of the, what, we didn't know what was happening. We didn't spend a lot of time doing a lot of the things as they reflected through this that they typically do at the beginning of the school year. It wasn't done in the same manner. And then we got to October and November and we hit all these behaviors and it felt like, oh my gosh. And by that point in time, now we're playing catch-up. We're not out in front of it. So I, I really commend the, the teachers and the administrators that have been working on this and able to identify that, okay, we need to work on this, we need to work on this, we need to come up with a plan for this and understanding that each building and each grade level is a little bit different. And I think we're in a better place for it. I think we'll continue to see these numbers decrease. I think we're going to start seeing teachers feel more supported because we've been able to identify and articulate what really is going on and where do we need to beef up supports? So that's our, our next steps are essentially that. We're, like I said, we're resetting how we're tracking and aligning our data that we're collecting, making sure we're doing it in the same manner. We've added the additional positions and we're going to continue working with staff on aligning what systems are in place. That was one of the big things that staff said at all the buildings and it really came out as a question is to what degree do we know that I'm holding students accountable for the same stuff that you're holding students accountable for? To what degree do we know that I'm addressing things in the same way that you are so that when a student's not with me, but they're with you, they're getting the same feedback? It's reinforced the same way, no different than when we're parenting, right? If, if we do it, if we do it a ton differently in the same household, that sets kids up to not know what, what they should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing. So again, a lot of self-reflection and good information coming out of our teaching staff, which is not surprising. And I think we're, we're in a good spot. With that, I'll take questions if there are some. I also have the principals here if we have questions specific for them, but that is our update on discipline.
Questions for Dr. McDowell. Director Dean.
Thank you. Maybe this is more of a request for as tracking and alignment of data goes forward. I would hope that at the administrator level, there's an evaluation of equitable discipline practice. And, and again, I see you nodding, so I know the answer is yes. That we see that classes of students by race or gender or special education status or in many of those other status are, are having this, a same, similar experience in our classroom. If you could expand on that, that'd be great if you need to bring it forward at a different time, that's understandable.
So that's actually what principals are working on now more specifically, and it's why we need to align our data. We were notified last year that we were identified as a first-year district for disproportionality, which means that, some of you will remember me talking about that, means that we were suspending, so we look at dismissal. So as an official definition, suspension, expulsion, anything like that is considered a dismissal for purposes of reporting. So our dismissal rate for our special education students and our students of color, particularly our black students, is at a higher percentage than that of non-special education or white students. And it's even more disproportionate if it, if it's a student of color who is also special ed. So those are things that we're paying attention to. We haven't received information back yet this year from our, what's called our DIRZ report. So every year, we have to submit a DIRZ report, Discipline Incident Reporting System to the state. And that's why whenever you see, you might see pages where there are numbers associated with different offenses because that's how it gets reported to the state. The state tracks gender, special education, ethnicity, race, grade level, numbers of suspensions, all that kind of stuff. And then based on their calculations, districts are notified if they're disproportionate, to your point, in any one of those. And so if you are, with one year, you're, you're just notified, two years, you're put on notice, three years, we could have a corrective action plan that we have to make, which would include, the Department of Education would assign someone to us and we would develop a plan that would require administrators of whomever this is about at their buildings to implement a plan. And we would have to demonstrate on an annual basis, progress towards eliminating the disproportionality is how it works.
Anybody else for Dr. McDowell on this piece?
Really appreciate this report.
It's helpful. Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the policy committee report.
All right, so we met on August 11th and you'll see later on today, there are a few policies that will come forward for first review or first read. I would just ask that, you know, for those particular policies, comments can be made from the board members at that time. So you'll see 428, 429, 602, 612 and 903 for first read and then 530 for second read. We do have Kathy Mon and Rachel Larson here if there are any questions about the 400 series and the 600 series policies that are on the list. 424, the license status, the recommendation by the policy committee was to not add this to our policies. And then for 616, we had a good lengthy discussion about this one. There were some additional information that we needed to get from MSBA. We did receive some of that information, so I believe at our next policy meeting, we will be dissecting that information. Actually, Rachel probably already has. She's nodding her head, yes. As we develop that one, along with 604 is, I believe, in the works as well. And then you'll see on the summary that the July 2022 MSBA policies, there are substantive and non-substantive policies. Because Director Dressley was not available at our August meeting, we wanted to ensure that she had the opportunity to review those as a committee member. So instead of bringing them tonight for first read, we'll bring them in September after she's had the opportunity to take a look at that and that everybody else has, has gotten the opportunity to take a look at those for first read. And that concludes my summary.
Okay, that would take us, unless there's specific questions to the summary, that would take us straight into working through your first readings on, it looks like we've got four or five, six first readings maybe? Yep, a few of them, so let's start with 428.
Are there any comments, concerns about 428?
I was just waiting for you to, I didn't know if you were going to summarize or not. No, I'm, no, Director Tate's ready. I just wanted to get straight, Director Tate.
It's just one request, the policy states that the purpose is to observe state statutes. However, there aren't any legal references in the policy itself. So I'm wondering if either that statement needs to be revised or the legal references
Yes, Director, Director Mon's getting that down. Thank you, Director Tate, on that one. I'm just pausing to make sure Director Mon's got it recorded. Probably, okay.
I'll give you a thumbs up.
Oh, okay, thanks, that's perfect. Is there anything else on 428? This is just our first reading, this is not something that would be moving to vote tonight anyway. So is there anything else on there? All right, Director Tate, thank you very much for catching that and we'll take a look at it. Let's move to policy 429. Anything, anything that the board would like to share on 429? Director Tate.
Same thing as 428. It's, it states that it's to observe state laws, but there aren't any legal references. And I have a few other comments that I put in here when you're ready.
I'm ready for it.
Okay. Just there was a spacing, a weird spacing issue with 3F. And I know I'm getting really picky, but I'm like that. And then Section 7 is procedure within the policy. And I know we've had these discussions, I just am curious where we're at with separating policy from procedure. Or are we, and my question was, or are we leaving it in there because it concerns the, specifically the superintendent and the board? So maybe then, I know we had talked about the 200 series, it being appropriate to leave in, but this one does also refer to superintendent and board. Just a question. And then I, I have a comment about the 7A. It states that the chair of the board would be responsible for making all decisions concerning resolutions of conflict of interest for the superintendent. But I, I don't, so what I understand is that all seven of us are supposed to have equal powers and that it seems to me that that would be giving more power to the board. I feel that that should be a board responsibility versus chair of the board responsibility. Yep, and I just noted in here, it's not, that's not a responsibility that is listed in Policy 202, which, which lists out all the responsibilities of the various positions. That's all I had.
That's very helpful, thank you, Director Tate. I'm wondering if this legal referral thing has something to do with the model, the way the model is set up. I've known that a couple of times, Director, Dr. McDowell, you have something on that?
Yeah, these two policies came out of 1819, 1920-ish to reference back. You'll see that they were, I think they, if I understand it correctly, they were an internal way for the district to reference financial procedures, which I think is what's noted. So it doesn't mean we can't add the legal stuff, but I think that's why they're not there when they were originally put in place.
These are also not MSBA model policies, these are specific to Hastings.
So it probably would make sense to try to get those legal references figured out then and have them in there if we're going to refer to it earlier on in the document, that would make sense. Okay, that moves us to Policy 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. One moment, I'm just trying to bring up the document, so I'm ready. Director Tate, give me a second here, there we go. Okay, Director Tate.
I didn't have any significant call-outs, only typographical type items. First one I noted was a spacing issue after 3B3 before 3C, if you got that? And then it looked like when I compared it to the model policy for MSBA, it looks like 3B should include 3.B.3 in addition to the 3.B.1 and 3.B.2 that are already included.
I'm really not trying to be funny here, Director Tate, can you say that again?
I'm anal.
No, 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 I'm being very serious, can you say that again, please?
3B, the section 3B, there's a section that lists out 3.B.1 and 3.B.2 to be inclusive and that doesn't include the third one, which is 3.B.3. If you read the paragraph, it would make sense, I promise.
Nope.
Okay. And just for future reference, for formatting concerns, just send me an email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then I just had two more notes and it's 5E, there needs to be a capital T at the beginning. And then the bottom, the legal reference is missing a period. It should be 128 dot 414. That's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was 602. All right, that brings us to Policy 612, Development of Parent and Family Engagement Policies for Title I Programs. And, did we have something with, was Ms. Larson going to do something on this one, Bob?
Only if we needed to.
If she needs to, okay, we need to be, great. Okay, I knew she was here as a subject matter expert. All right, so Policy 612, Director Tate.
Yeah, so I was, I, we did have some email back and forth, but I do have an additional question. So I was regarding, we're removing the, the purple strike-through that's in the draft. We're removing it because we don't have that, we don't currently have that in our district. But my question is, would we want to leave it in there? Should we qualify for that at some point and just change the verbiage to indicate that instead of removing the whole section because we don't currently qualify?
I, I get what you're saying on that. And I, Mrs. Larson, I don't know if you can speak a little bit more to that, but my concern about adding something preemptively is that it might create more confusion. We can always, policies are, are ours to, to, if there is a change, we would absolutely go back and get that added in. Mrs. Larson, if you can add to that.
Yeah, thank you, I would concur with that. I wouldn't suggest that we have something in policy that doesn't currently apply to us as a district because we can always update it as needed. And I would defer to Director Subert that I believe we're not even close to getting to the level of qualifying for school-wide services because we're pretty far away from that, that minimum of free and reduced lunch.
All right, thank you. Anything else for 612? Thank you, Mrs. Larson. We will move forward to 903, Policy 903, Visitors to School District Buildings and Sites. Any concerns or anything that we need to bring back to policy about that? Director Tate?
So the policy references the procedure as 903.1, but there is no 903.1. And I just want to make sure, I believe that's in development and would they both be rolled out at the same time then? When, when this policy rolls out, that would be automatically kind of added at the same time?
Yep, we, at the last policy meeting, I think I shared the, what we're calling procedures now. We've gone through it with principals, so we're ready with that 903.1, wherever that's going to end up living, that's called out here as being developed.
And then I was just wondering why the purple portion was being removed from that
So the, the purple section there that's being removed, which is, I believe it's 4A is what you're referring to? Yeah, so the 4A piece, so when we look at this, what is there is in conflict with what principals are, are expected to do as managing their building. It doesn't mean that they're not going to take input, but as far as procedures with regard to the specific policy, the committee talked and we didn't feel that we needed to have all of that in there is really just why it's not in there.
And then just, this is again, just a grammatical thing, 5B, it's just inconsistent grammar between the, the 5B, um, it's just inconsistent grammar between the, the one and two. It just says move the vehicle off school property or school property. And then the other one says off of school property. I know that's super anal, but, um, it's just inconsistent. And then the, I noticed that the legal reference should be updated to be, uh, 124D dot 09, post-secondary enrollment options act. Was the specific verbiage on the actual statute? And then, oh, this was interesting. So the legal reference for, um, 128C dot 08, assaulting a sports off, a sports official prohibited, is referenced as a legal reference within the policy. However, there is no reference whatsoever to that within the policy itself. So to me, it looks like, and I know this is an MSBA, um, model policy, so I don't know if that's a question for MSBA, but why would they reference? And I read through the statute, it doesn't make sense to me why it's referencing that specific statute within this particular policy. Because there's no mention of why or what, what the link is between the two. My point.
That's 128C point 08 you're talking about?
Correct.
I don't have the statute up at this point, um, nor do I have an answer for you. That would be thorough, um, so that I think that's something that we'll have to bring back.
And I think the question is, do we want to put verbiage in there? Because the, the reason that it's there is because this is to buildings and sites. So anybody that is a, a visitor and a spectator at a game, if something like that, parent, something like that, that would fall under the visitor policy as well as several other policies. So it's just a, it's really a matter of, do you put verbiage in that links it? But it is linked and it does relate to this policy in that manner.
Yeah, I read it to, um, specifically relate to the final paragraph, 5C. Um, we talk about post-enrollment, post-secondary enrollment option students or group who enters school property without complying with the procedures and requirements. Um, that could certainly be linked to a, um, a sporting event. So that's where I found the link. But Policy Committee can follow up with a question to MSBA.
All right, I think that covered those first readings. Brings us to a second reading on policy 530. Now as a reminder, it's a second reading, so it can be moved to an action item if we see fit, once reviewing 530 again per the committee. I'm sorry, Director Hadeen?
I may have lost track of where we are in approving, um, policy practices, but I understood that our intent was to move towards a three-month policy review practice. So while it could, um, be moved to an action item today, I, I believe we were moving towards a practice of, um, not doing that unless there was a reason, uh, for a timeliness reason.
Yes, I understand this, um, from the pers- um, perspective of expeditiousness, I was just indicating that, I was just differentiating the first readings from second readings. That's all I was doing, the difference between it for the public, not saying that we should or should not. Are there any, um, comments on 530? All right, well, if there's no problems on 530, then if there's some further action to be taken, we can move into our action items. Can we do that? Then move this, oh, I'm sorry, Director Tate?
I guess I, I, along Director Hadeen's comment, I thought that we were trying, unless there was a reason that we need to have this approved now, we were moving toward not, after the second reading, approving it next month. Instead of doing it the same night because...
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so move it to an action item next month. Thank you.
It'll be listed as an action item next month. See, what we did tonight was, right, next month we'll do that. Just wanted to indicate, I was just trying to indicate for the public, the difference between first readings and second readings, that's all I was doing.
Sorry, and you confused me in the manner.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, so now we will move to the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to move policy 530 immunizations to an action item for September's board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion other than what we've had already? So all in favor can signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we'll move it to next month. Be ready to go on the action item. Thank you. We now move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second.
So moved.
Second.
If a first and a second, any discussion? With no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. I bring this down to our items of individual action. The first one is bills payable. I need a motion to approve bills payable in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on bills payable? Director Tate?
Um, yeah, I just would, I'm wondering if, um, Ms. Hubert could just explain for the public why the pie charts look so different from each other at this time of the year?
It's really related to salaries. So, um, our teachers haven't started back yet. Our, um, their payoffs go through the prior fiscal year. So it'll start looking, um, more in alignment after September.
Thank you, Ms. Hubert. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the bills payable, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Bills payable passes. We now move to OPEB. Dr. McDowd, do we need to put any, um, context around it?
So, uh, other post-employment benefits is what OPEB stands for. Uh, this is a conversation that the school board has had at, at least two work sessions. OPEB is a, um, a way for the school board to levy for, um, funds to pay for expenses related to OPEB. It's a requirement in order to be in this position to levy those, to have, uh, your contracts, your labor contracts in a position where they have sunset clauses in them. This is coming up now because with the, uh, teacher's contract now having a sunset clause in it, we have a significant enough amount of people that would allow us to, um, levy for about $422,000 as of right now. This is something that the board can vote to levy. Tonight would be a vote to give Jen Subert the ability to put the, the checkbox, uh, for the state, saying that the district is interested in levying for OPEB at the maximum. This will come up for a vote again in December. That's when the board will say, yes, we are doing this. But in order for us to even be able to consider it in December, the board needs to give us the okay to check that little box, along with all of our other levy recommendations, um, that will be finalized in December. Is there anything else you'd want to add?
Thank you for the context, that this thing is good for the public to hear that and understand, um, what we're doing with that as we try to move this down, ball down the road a little bit further. So, um, that being said, are there any questions? We have a first and a second already, or did, no, we did not. I need a first and a second on OPEB levy.
So moved.
Second.
Now, any questions, any other comments on the OPEB levy? Uh, Director Mom?
Uh, it's not specifically about the OPEB levy, but it's about OPEB technology fund transfer, which is the next one. It's about our budget adjustments. So for the, I think it's really important that the public know and understand, please come to our budget adjustment meetings. Um, they will be posted on our website. They're also available in the district office on when those will be held. But as we go into this new year, as, as we've seen in the past years, we have to make some very difficult decisions coming up. Um, this OPEB levy and the technology fund transfer will allow us, um, a little bit of cushion to, to, that will assist us in making those budget adjustment, adjustment decisions down the road. So, um, I really, really encourage, I mean, this is your taxpayer money. This is super important. Please come to those, engage with us, um, about this. But, um, I, I think this is, is, this is critical that we have this OPEB levy, um, along with that transfer and then moving forward into our, um, our future two levies that will be coming down the road. It's really important that the community is engaged and that we're engaged with the community on the importance of, um, ensuring that we have financial stability within our district.
Thank you, Director Mom. Anybody else? Okay, um, based on there being no other comments, I just need to go to a vote. All those in favor of moving, um, the OPEB levy to allow Ms. Hubert to do the work she has to do to set it up with the state in the event we do determine to do it, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I am going to ask, okay, so removing the technology fund transfer, I'm going to ask again, Dr. McDowd, and just for the public, give some, um, color as to how this works and why this $300,000 is available.
So the technology transfer, or the technology fund transfer is something that the board has done for many years now. Uh, it, historically, it was $100,000 a year that the board would, would vote to transfer out of the general fund into a restricted account, um, at that point in time, um, which means that, uh, it can only be used for whatever the board has designated that. So the board has done that. As we went through budget adjustments last year, one of the decisions that the board made was to increase that amount to $300,000 to transfer that. Given our current state, again, the last couple, at least a couple of work sessions, uh, we've presented administratively that our recommendation is that we ask the board to rescind that $300,000 and allow us to keep that $300,000 in the general fund, um, as part of budget adjustments so that, um, with the, we have roughly 925,000-ish dollars in the current set aside, um, along with the additional contingency dollars we were able to use in the bond. We have, we feel we have enough in the short term to take care of our technology needs. And so it makes sense to do a little bit of shifting. So this is the second part of the budget adjustment, just like the, the OPEB. This is an internal shift and we're really asking the board to, um, rescind, um, the move so that we will not transfer that $300,000 from general fund into regular fund until such time we decide you want to start doing it again. So this would be, really, you're voting on a permanent rescinding until we bring this back to the table again.
Thank you, Dr. McDowd. It's very helpful. Um, just to get context around it before we move on to the next step, which is to get a motion in a second on the, um, technology fund transfer.
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, any conversation? Anything else anybody needs to know at the table? All right, with that, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of the rescinding of that technology fund transfer, all signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. There you go, Ms. Hubert. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the international trip moratorium. Um, as the public knows, there's been a period of time here where the, um, because our schools have not been able to travel internationally due to COVID and everything else going on and our best efforts to try to insulate them from getting trapped somewhere and not be able to travel back, so on and so forth. We, we feel now is the time to, um, lift that with a few caveats, um, that we've got built in here. So, um, if you are looking at Board Book, you'll see that there is a draft for international student travel. It's pretty simple. Um, I guess I can read it. Um, basically, it says that I am going to move that the moratorium and now trips be rescinded, but that such trips include the following. Trip insurance must be offered to all participants in declaration of such insurance documented. Medical emergency plans must be submitted by the trip organizer prior to approval. And in a situation where student participant is not allowed to return within the, with the group for any reason, to include departure before or requirement to stay longer than scheduled, parents, guardians must agree to assume responsibility for their student. Um, I just want to be clear about one piece. We talked about this a lot in our work session, I want to make sure this is clear. That third piece about the parent being responsible does not mean that the minute this happens, the parent has to jump on their next plane and get over to wherever their child happens to be. Until it's reasonable for someone to get to their child, of course, we will have our own chaperones as part of our emergency plan in place to ensure that that child is taken care of and protected until their parents can reach them. That's why I want to make sure I'm clear on that, that we're not leaving anybody on their own. But we feel it's necessary to put these caveats in place in the event that something else should come up, because you just never know. I mean, we certainly didn't see the last one coming, that's for sure. So that being said, I would need a first and a second on this.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, so that's great. International student travel will now be coming back, which is a very happy thing. It's a, I think it's terrific, actually. I'm very excited about that. Thank you. We now move to, uh, resolution that calls for a special election to fill a school board vacancy. It's necessary for us to go through this resolution in order to make sure all our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. So we will get to that resolution right now. Uh, Dr. McDowd, is, um, Director Bysel reading this?
Uh, you can do this one of two ways. You can read it word for word, or you can do as you've done in the past, as your past practice, is that she presents the resolution as written?
As written, yeah. As written works, as written works great. As written works great.
And just for the public to know that this is a resolution that, uh, calls the election, it doesn't call who's running in the election, which is why further down you see a ballot that just has name, name, name.
Essentially just setting us up for November 8.
Correct.
Got it. All right, Director Bysel, you're on.
I beg you, Bysel, introduce the following resolution and move his ad- move its adoption as written.
This requires a roll call vote.
Second.
Yeah, get a second.
Did I get my second? Okay.
Yeah, we seconded over each other.
Okay, well, we got to pick one of you guys for the second. There we go. Um, and we'll need to do a roll call vote for this.
Lisa Hadeen?
Yes.
Jessica Dressley's not here. Becky Bysel, yes. Carrie Tate?
Yes.
Stephanie Mom?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
Yes. Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving to our next piece here, and that would be staff recognition, Dr. McDowd.
So in our staff recognition, when we redid this policy, we said we would revisit this every fall, and we are now to that place. Our recommendation for a policy for 30 staff recognition is that we keep in place the parameters and the, um, the awards or recognition for the yearly marks that we had. Those seemed to work really well last year, um, and, uh, were well received. So our recommendation is that you approve the staff recognition plan as presented for the 22, 23 school year, and it is exactly the same as it was for the 21, 22 school year.
Okay, on those, on that, excuse me, on the staff recognition, I need a first and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this, other than what Dr. McDowd has provided? Okay, all those in favor then, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion passes. This moves us, this moves, excuse me, into our LTFM?
So LTFM stands for long-term facility maintenance. This is something that the board has to approve on an annual basis. And, um, so we'll need to take a, uh, a motion, you can, you can include, um, you can take a look at the revised version, and if there are questions, we have Jen here as well as Cam Peterson.
The first thing on these LTFM, the 10-year revenue projection and the 10-year expenditure plan, um, we need a first and a second. We can cover both same time and then take any questions that we may have. So can I get a first and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, first and second have been done. Any, um, questions, um, for Cam or anybody else on staff? Any questions for Cam or anybody else on staff? One clarification from Dr. McDowell, and then we'll move to questions.
Just for the public and for, I mean, board members already know this, but while it says it's a 10-year plan, we update it annually and it changes on an annual basis. But a requirement is to keep a 10-year plan in place. So it oftentimes confuses people that when they see this plan is different than the other plan. It's a 10-year plan, but it's constantly moving on a 12-month cycle, so things are going to change. It's just, it's really an update of the 10-year plan ongoing.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell, and thank you for stealing Director Ma's thunder. Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I, I just have a question regarding the, I think, the naming of the document. When it says revised, this is just revised from the previous year. It's not recently revised from a recent approval. This is revised from when we took action in 2021.
So there is a slight revision to it. It was approved in June, and when we submitted it to Minnesota Department of Ed, we found out that one project had to change between finance codes. So we made that slight change, and we're bringing it back to you. The totals are all still the same. There's just one project that moved between two different finance codes.
So in summary, something we approved, had one code change, approve it again. Okay. Such is life. Any other questions? Director Tate, did you have something? I thought you, you didn't have your, I'm sorry. I'm trying really hard to make sure that, okay. All right, so with no other questions, all those in favor of approval of the LTFM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Whoops, I'm sorry about that. This moves us through any requests for future topics that we can add to our work session.
Consulting legal versus MSBA regarding board matters or board questions. When, when do we go where? And making sure also that that communication comes back to all the board members and how and when and all that kind of stuff. So just process question, process discussion.
Director Bysel?
So people have been asking this question. I don't know how they answer, and it was brought up tonight in the listening session, how committees are chosen? Is there a policy, is there a protocol? Or are they just kind of picked based on what the committee or what, what is needed? So do we have protocol, how that works? Or how, how is that? How are all the committees chosen? Does that like more clarification on that as well?
And just to be clear, it wasn't board polit, it wasn't board committees. It was, in this case, a curriculum review committee.
Or hiring, or any kind of committee that, or appeal. Like, how are you picking certain people for being on certain committees? Yeah, not, yeah, sorry, I should have clarified that. Not, not board committees.
Okay.
Outside of the board committees.
I see. Superintendent McDowell?
So since that's not a board thing, it's a management thing. So one of two, one of two things happens. Either, either it is written in a policy. For example, curriculum, any of the 600 series policies around curriculum have, have those pieces written into them. Other, other policies generically have suggestions of who should be on a team, but the procedures are, or have been, depending upon what the topic is, what the committee is, administratively figuring out how to best go about putting the required number of people in a given, whether it's a demographic, or if it's a building level, or whatever that would be, getting representation from that. So. I don't know, I, what I don't know is what the board would discuss on that one. But that's how they're done administratively. It's either guidance through a policy that's already existing, or we, we make the best decision based on what we, we believe we need to have on a, on a committee for a specific topic.
It could just be, it could just be as simple as an education on here's what we do, as opposed to that kind of thing. Presentation, here's what we do type of thing. Anything else, Director Bysel, on that?
We're back live.
Okay, great. Hey, welcome back. So we're, oh, so you're Director Bysel, okay. So, so, so for those folks that were dropped out for a while, we're just going over future agenda items, going through each director and finding out what they'd like to see on a future agenda. So we've worked through those, and I think everybody has got an opportunity to share. So now we are past a request for future topics, and we've got future meetings coming up. The future meetings are on the website and available to you, to anybody in the public to take a look and stop by or tune in. Either way, you know, completely up to you. But it appears that our next meeting is potentially a special school board meeting with board candidate interviews, which will be incorporated into our school board regular work session, which is also, which we'll also leave that same day. All of it's special, right? I'm just making sure. Yep. Director McDowell?
So just for the, the folks that are listening or attend, rather than giving a specific time for an additional work session, because we don't know how long this meeting would go, it made more sense to create one special session that included work session topics inside of that session so that the board can do both the process for candidates for appointment, and then whenever that's done, start work session topics. And then we just didn't want people to be upset if they showed up at 6 o'clock and then you weren't done with your interviews and, and we didn't, it was just too confusing.
Exactly. Thank you. Director Tate?
I do have one request. If we could get an updated, an updated schedule of what the tentative topics are for the next working sessions, I would appreciate it.
I'd, I'd like to make a request of Ms. Garcia. I have, I now have a conflict with our October finance committee meeting. 917 is doing a board deep, deep development, deep learning event that morning. So if you could do a short doodle poll and hold us at that same time, because we want the most accurate enrollment numbers instead of new finance, that'd be terrific. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, thank you all very much for your participation tonight. It was, it was efficient and it was good robust conversation. I really appreciate that. Love when the plan comes together. I need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.